Two thumbs up and we're rolling, huh? All right, good evening. I'd like to welcome you and call to order the June seventeenth Port Orchard City Council regular meeting. And I'd like to remind us in the actions that we are about to take of our guiding principles. Are we raising the bar in all of our actions? Are we honoring the past but not living in the past? Are we building positive connections with our community and outside partners? And is the decision-making process building a diverse, equitable, and inclusive community? Please stand and join me. A pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have a published agenda. Councilmember Rose Pepe, would you like to propose an amendment?
I would like to propose two amendments. The first one is on consent item E, excusal of councilmember Deener for business reasons.
Okay.
And.
One at a time.
Sorry.
Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion by councilmember Rose Pepe, a second by councilmember Trenary to excuse councilmember Deener for business reasons. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? If none, the excusal has been approved. You have a second one?
I do. I would like to move the discussion item marketing strategy up after the consent agenda because I know that Josh has a family and I'd like to get him out of here at a reasonable time.
Wow.
Second.
And a second to let Josh go home early.
Maybe he doesn't want to.
Wants to stick around.
That was harsh.
Okay. Discussion of that. No? All right, all in favor of the Josh Go Home Early Plan by moving discussion item A ahead of our business items. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Did he pay you?
That's not something he should answer.
So Mayor, I would like to move forward approval of the agenda as amended.
I would like to move.
Sorry, I apologize.
That's okay. That's all right. You were on a roll, but.
I was.
I would like to move consent agenda item four C to business just for discussion.
Okay.
Second that.
There's a motion by councilmember Chang, a second by councilmember Fenton to make consent item C business item. Where are you? C. Okay.
B, business item D.
Oops, I'm in the wrong category. You're right, D, business item D, code enforcement. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, that has been moved to item D. Huh? Mr. London is not here.
She's, she's just downstairs.
She'll come up.
Yeah, she'll come up.
She's likely stalking us unsavory. All right. We've got that done. Any other proposed amendments? Councilmember Rose Pepe is wanting to approve the agenda.
I do. Mayor moved to approve the agenda as amended.
Second. By councilmember Rose Pepe, a second by councilmember Chang to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Agenda's been set for tonight. First citizen comment period. Josh doesn't count. I see. Whoa. Online. And if you wish to address the council, please raise your hand. Use the raise your hand feature and we will bring you into the meeting. All right, I see no hands raised, so I'll close the first citizen comment period. We're to, we have an amended consent agenda. It's our motion to approve. Councilmember Trenary?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the amended consent agenda.
Second.
So motion by councilmember Trenary. Was that councilmember Morsby that made the second? All right. To approve the amended consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda has been set or approved. All right, we now have a presentation on our marketing strategy that is now the most important piece of business we have. So Josh Johnson, if you don't know him, is our contract public information officer and he does various marketing activities for the last, what, three years he's been doing under contract with us. And he's going to share with us the things he's been doing this past year and his projects that we have on his docket. And then we'd like to hear from you, what you think, and maybe there's other ideas you have too. So Josh, take it away. Josh, could you get that? If you could get that microphone just a little closer to you, raise it up. It goes up there? Maybe?
I don't think it is, yeah.
Check, check.
There you go.
That's better. All right. Let's start this thing. Hi, I'm Josh Johnson. Good to see you all. Your public information officer on contract here, the city of Port Orchard, city I was born and raised. I'll just jump right into it. I've got about thirteen slides. And if there's any questions or comments, please jump in at any point. So this is just an example of some of the completed and ongoing work. It's kind of a, a lot of this is on a rolling basis in communication with the mayor and other staff members. But communicate with the mayor and staff on communications and messaging needs. Identify information to share with the public and increase communication. And I kind of, to put a pin on that there, I really, you know, reading the, guiding the principles, I feel like principle number three, you know, creating these connections with the community and our partners is really where I focus. When I came into this role, I thought it's not just about providing information about road closures. It's about providing information that's going to help build not only positive public sentiment and get the right information into the right hands, but also build positive connections through the city to our community, whether that's sharing a bit of good news or something that's really nuts and bolts and tactical about a road closure or roundabout update or things like that. So just to kind of preface this by, I look to that guiding principle number three as kind of the job description, right? Communicate timely information to public at request of the city staff. All, sometimes various folks will ping me with different updates and projects and things on their desk that might be appropriate. And the mayor and I will work to determine how we kind of message that out. Write press releases as needed. If we need something official written, a piece of news that can go out, I write and format those for approval. Design elements as needed. Photography, capture of photos and events as needed, something I enjoy doing. Provide copyrighting as needed. Create a cohesive visual style for city social media in accordance with the branding. I took the branding and the colors and the logo and I tried to make everything look cohesive and like it's one voice coming from the city and not a mishmash. So kind of try to get the branding out there. It's not really branding really. It's more of like a cohesive visual language that I try to use when we're communicating on social media. Capture B-roll, which is a generic term for kind of just general video. The city for video projects, which we'll talk about one coming up here in a, in a little while. Scripting the creation of a Port Orchard, kind of a recruitment promotion video. Can talk about that a little further here in a second. And we're creating a document that the Chamber of Commerce has requested assisting, assisting business owners, new business owners. So.
That's that item is a one, it's a one-page document that the chamber can head on. How do you get a business license? And we're going to put it on our website too.
Yeah, and I got a slide. I'll chat about that real quick here in a sec. I'm just going to go through some of the things that are kind of teed up right now at various stages. Some of them are kind of ongoing, some of them are really specific to things we're working on with the mayor and city staff. So first of all, it's planning and prioritizing, looking at what we're going to message out in the near future, what infrastructure projects are underway, what's finishing up, what's getting underway, and some of the other larger projects, trying to prioritize and plan those, plan those out. So this is something that we've, we put the, pushed the green light on recently, relatively recently, but we've been kind of going back and forth on for a few months, which is kind of creating a promotional video or an introduction to Port Orchard that can really aid in employment recruitment primarily, I think. Focusing on public works and maybe the police department, but certainly will be appropriate for any city staff member that really kind of unpacks, shows, shows the, shows Port Orchard and unpacks what makes this community special and what working for the city looks and feels like and how that impacts our community positively. So I've submitted a initial draft to some city staff, so we're kind of working on that, retooling that, it's looking good. This will be something that's, we're going to shoot. There'll be some talking head kind of interview portions with police staff and public work. So it's something we're going to be capturing over the next couple of months and we will have edited and rolled out here by the end of summer is the goal. And that'll be something that we can use evergreen. And it'll also be a video file that if we want to go back and update in the future, say, hey, look, let's add this little specific piece of information or this is no longer relevant, that'll be easy to do as well. Port Orchard Community Center event update. I'm working with the RFM team. I've been on that. I've been a part of the community event project since it was, since we hung that up, twenty seventeen. Feels like a lifetime ago. But the, so I'm, I'm on the RFM team as well. It's been a little quiet, but we just received an update on timelines and things like that. So really just trying to, in the next several weeks, I'm going to extract some information that just might be useful to the public, run it by the mayor, put that out there. Nothing extremely exciting, but it's been a long time since we had a tangible update on the community event center. So just looking to find like some, some nuggets of information that we put out there, go, hey, you know, we're at this design phase or this is moving forward and things are still happening. I think people just would like to, there was a lot, you know, there's a tremendous amount of public support and sentiment. I think some people ask me, is it still happening? It's like, yes, of course. People just don't hear about it and they don't understand kind of the, the slow-moving gears of permitting and shorelines and bureaucracy and construction and grants and all that. So next up, as Mayor alluded to, we, something that the previous chamber executive requested, and then we kind of came out with my first draft and put it on a whole little bit, and we got confirmation that the new chamber executive, Jaclyn, would like to go forward with this. So I have some edits in place that I should be able to finish up here in the next week or so, get another draft in front of us. And this is a single sheet of paper, really to be at the chamber, to assist business owners, new business owners, kind of a, hey, here's, here's what you do, here's how you have to, some fees you have to pay, here's where you go, here are the URLs, to just write it, really make, demystify the process and make it as easy as possible to start your business and run your business in, in Port Orchard. And next up, this is a big one, that takes us into next year, is begin to plan and create a Bay Street construction, public messaging strategy and engagement for business owners and key stakeholders. Had a great meeting with Chris Hammer yesterday and I was really just asking all those nuts and bolts questions. What's it going to look like from where to where? How many months? So I can really get my head around the whole project. And it's extremely helpful. And we talked about other infrastructure projects as well that, that I will message out through social media throughout the summer and whatnot, updates. But next steps is Mayor and I will have a meeting with Port Orchard Waterfront Alliance in the next month or so, formerly PABSA, now Pawa. And just get their feedback, meet with their executive team and say, hey, here's what kind of it's looking like, what's shaping up. And really, my goal isn't just to get the information, because there's a lot of trepidation with business owners, but I think once they get the information, it's going to be a lot less scary than people might imagine it being. But my goal is to actually have it be a net positive and us to come out of this, especially since it looks like that closure and that construction's going to run into the FIFA celebratory season that we're going to see July twenty twenty-six. We got some great ideas about how to actually leverage that into a win and have that road closure be, you know, potentially activated in a way that is for the public good. But my goal isn't to just, my goal is to get the, understand the issue and then understand how we can get all of the stakeholders, all of the business owners, especially on our Bay Street corridor, but really everybody, the, the accurate information. And then put together a full-spectrum marketing and messaging plan that isn't just specific to this one construction item, but it's really a point will be a campaign of civic pride and a campaign of pride for our local businesses. And something I hope will kind of roll over and not just be about, well, golly gee, you know, we're going to have construction for X amount of months, but really kind of start a momentum and marketing movement on supporting Port Orchard, loving Port Orchard and honoring and supporting our local businesses. And I'm talking a mile a minute. Let me know if I'm, I need to stop or give any questions.
You're doing great.
Can you tell a little more about your social media outreach? You mentioned that.
Yeah, we're gonna, I'm gonna, it's just, it's just a few slides.
More slides. Let them get their slides and then, then that we'll do questions.
The next, oh, you're following along with me, thank you. So I think we just, actually, I already covered this, meeting with the Port Orchard Waterfront Alliance, discuss these things. And also with Jaclyn at the Chamber of Commerce to get her feedback and come up alongside and really kind of work as a coalition to market and message these things out and then ask their support as we push this information out as well. On that note, Chris Hammer had a really valuable piece of information that he was on the, he worked for Bainbridge Island during their Winslow Way construction. And Winslow Way, you know, it's a super bustling business district, really beautiful. Well, they shut down their road. They had a year-long construction project. And so he, he had some valuable insights, but also felt that the Bainbridge Island Downtown Association has some valuable insights on how they messaged it out, what worked, you know, how people publicly responded. And he said that it was really extremely effective, their marketing campaign, and then when they looked at the revenues and that there really wasn't much of a dip due to their positive marketing campaign. And I have a great relationship with Bainbridge Island Downtown Association, thankfully. So that's, those are, those are relationships I can call upon. So I'm going to have a meeting with them and just kind of pick their brain, see what Port Orchard can glean from, from their experience. Real quick, I'm putting together an updated Port Orchard photo asset library of images that my wife and I have captured over the last several years. And I've shared something in the past, but this is going to be a lot more robust and it really is images all of our community and that's something that the, the city can use at any point, whether it's a print material or social media or website images. I just really, I want them to be used, so I want to make them, make sure everybody has them and they're available. We're in this FIFA strategy planning. I have another, another hat that I wear that is with FIFA marketing and messaging as well, but it's on my mind as the information officer and as a Port Orchard local to make sure that we're constantly folding this in and making this, you know, million people or however many people are going to travel to Seattle. And then we anticipate tens of thousands will make their way to Kitsap County and a lot of them will Airbnb here and things like that. How do we make this a really net positive for our community, our restaurant owners and business owners? And I just threw this in here because this is something I periodically do at, as requested, is usually once a year or something like that. We need to put out a community survey. So if there's something we're going to do this year, that's still to be determined, but I can run surveys and then provide, feed, provide the follow-up documentation on, on public sentiment and various, various issues. So to councilmember Chang's question, here's kind of just a glimpse at the thirty to sixty day social media messaging, what we're looking at right now. And also there's kind of a rolling, things pop up. Hey, we put this out or there's a news item here or there's something happens here. Mayor had the good idea to do a new business opening appreciation, just celebrating, celebrating the new businesses that are coming online. Every month we also do a certificate of occupancy business listing, which is kind of a more high level, like, hey, welcome to these businesses. The new business opening appreciation would be something that's a little more of a specific appreciation of a local business. Going to put out the fireworks, public safety regulations the next week or so. Got to let people know what they can and cannot do in the city of Port Orchard. Based on the information I got from Mr. Hammer yesterday, Marina Lift Station Construction completion update, going to share that graphic once again with more information, just to show people that the lawn, the public plaza, getting people, you know, it's, it's going to go from this, what we've been seeing and really get people like, hey, it's coming, it's coming online in July and then by August-ish, being very general with our timelines always. Give people a look at what, what's coming up. I think people are really, I, I'm excited to see it and I think people are really going to be appreciative of the information and, and the reality of this lift station and the lawn and the viewing plaza that's going to be there. I always like to communicate when I hear about some of these grants that, that the city gets, I like to communicate that. I think that's a really, something, when I came into this position, I said, we got to let everybody know about every grant we get because A, it shows the city's staff is super competent, hardworking, and B, it really shows people that it's not just your tax dollars that are, right, that are going into these projects. I think that's super important for people to know because A, it's a point of civic pride, but B, it's like, it's not, the burden's not all on the shoulders. City staff is very competent, going after state and federal dollars as appropriate and that's a net win for our city. It's like, hey, look, at the end of the day, this doesn't take anything away from you. It's an added bonus. So if there's a grant we've received for any of these projects, I like to kind of communicate that. Most of the funds are fun information. I'd like to do a city employee spotlight appreciation on a monthly basis, kind of bounce from department to department, something new that I'd like to introduce here shortly. Again, any roadwork, infrastructure, I'm going to do some updates on pottery, X space and the non-motorized vehicle, including the ones we're really going to grant. I mean, people want to know that. It's like we're keeping, we're improving the front and the sidewalks, which is so needed about, I think anybody with kids that walks up, they really appreciate this work, but also about a million and a half dollars to help keep our kids safe. Our city is beautiful. Going to work on some language around updating impact fees and primarily to communicate that, that, that growth helps us grow. That when, when developers or people that are helping the city grow in that way, pay these fees, that helps us do things like fund fish paths of work, dealing with capacity road management and really improving the infrastructure in the city as a whole. I think that's a really positive message. I'm going to talk about city parks, just unpack that a little bit. I'll do some graphics and additional posts as questions. If you have anything you should, uh, Mayor, if there's something that you feel like is worthy to communicate or timely, let them know, we'll work together.
Brett, you had, I think you had a question.
Yeah, can you talk a little more about the social media? Like, are you talking Facebook, Instagram, TikTok?
Facebook, yeah.
And, okay.
Yeah.
One idea, I was thinking is, you might be able to advise us on how practical the pages are. For example, there is a page on just downtown parking, where to park in Port Orchard, or maybe even a page on Bay Street Construction.
Oh, you mean like, like a dedicated Facebook page for these projects?
Yes. I don't know if that's better than a webpage. It might be easier to create it on Facebook and link it from the webpage, but I can email Rob.
I actually think that's a great idea, especially when we talk about the Bay Street Reconstruction Project. Maybe there's a, let's discuss, I think maybe a dedicated page, because yeah, you're right, not everybody makes it to the city webpage. But really, I, I think the smartest thing to do is to go where people are and a lot of people are on Facebook and it's really easy for them to access and remember and bookmark. So maybe a, it could even, we could even just kind of throw a spaghetti against the wall, like make it like a, I love Bay Street or Bay Street Strong or fans of Bay Street or something. We, we create a page that doesn't sound like construction update Facebook group or something like, you know, make it, make it, make it positive, make it a little warm and fuzzy.
Probably more benefit to trying to ensure, remind people that our businesses are open and promoting, because once we start the construction project, in particular the road closure, hopefully it's sixty days and it's not an issue. The road's closed, there's a detour, you know, but, did you have a question?
I had, well, I was just, so all this information that you're giving, this is going to go on the Port Orchard government page, is that correct?
This is some ideas of some of the things that we're thinking about, Tina.
These are projects, yeah. A lot of this ends up on our webpage. It ends up as posts on our social media. I think those that do social media, you probably see those.
I like that though. That's going to be more information and more transparent, what you're going to do for the Port Orchard government page.
Thank you.
Jay?
So are we linked out of Facebook with anything else like Instagram automatically?
Yeah, I'm not, not to my knowledge, not TikTok though. Maybe we should be doing TikTok dances.
There's no back and forth because of the public records aspect of it.
No, I just, you know, I know that Instagram is part of Meta also, so I didn't know if they could be in, you know, because some people, how do I say this in a nice way? Facebook's getting not dated, but it has a certain segment of people that look at it. Instagram has its own following and I didn't know whether we could, you know, essentially if it goes to one, it goes to the other, because I know you can link them. I just, I don't know how.
You know, if I was just kind of shooting from the hip, if I was to advise on the use of Instagram, I don't think it's necessarily a bad idea, but Instagram is a visual platform.
Right.
Facebook is really great because you can drop links in there, you can tag other pages really easily. And you're right, there is a slightly older demographic that is leaning towards Facebook and then slightly, and then you, you get younger as you get down into TikTok and things like that. But Instagram, I would say, if we wanted to jump on Instagram, it's a primarily visual medium. So it's really about, for me, it wouldn't be necessarily about getting the nuts and bolts road closures and information, but it'd be like the beauty of Port Orchard, shots of staff, you know.
Right. Your video or stuff. I mean, you know, since it's the same, you know, meta platform, I was just looking at possibility of doing that. I understand your concerns, Mayor, about the, you know, open records, but I just, I'll just put that out there as maybe a possibility.
If y'all think it's a good idea, I'll do it.
You, you can set it up to the announcement only, just like with Facebook. And the police have their own separate Instagram, which is announcement only.
Yeah. And you, and you don't have, you, you can link the posts, you don't have to. You can also choose what posts to link on a case-by-case basis if you'd like, but I would advise just use it as its intended purpose, as Instagram is a, a visual platform. It's not necessarily a, a place for public announcements and a lot of information.
But since we're doing some of that, it might be, I'm just throwing it out there.
Yeah, and it's a good way to use all the photos I'm going to share.
Thank you, Josh.
Of course.
Yeah, uh, thank you for the presentation today, Josh. Much appreciated. Just a couple of things, just to kind of keep in mind from my perspective. One, I thought of another helpful use for maybe downtown, maybe checking in with the Downtown Bremerton Association. They had a big closure in Quincy Square and I've heard good things about how their city is working with the local businesses and, and residents that are impacted by that. I also would just like to throw my support behind education in all aspects of what we put out there. I have found, being in this role now, that it's hard to combat. I don't want to say inconsistent, but incomplete information, right? And so I think education, this is a great tool for the folks to understand what the city of Port Orchard can and/or cannot do, right? And/or how other things are coming into play, right? So I happen to love diving into comments on wherever.
That's dangerous.
That may be, it's very dangerous. I highly advise if you're going to do that, do it right before bed, so you can turn it off and, and, and walk away and not give that to anybody else. But so just one earlier today, right? Before coming into this meeting, I happened to find one on a Port Orchard page around the park that's being built in Gig Harbor up near.
Saw that.
Did you see that one, right? And so are you a comment guy?
I try not to be. I mean, I, I read them, but yeah, then my blood pressure goes up. My doctor said that's not right.
But as long as you know that, don't let that do that to yourself. I think it's also great for me to know how to interact with people, right? That, that's just, it's an education piece for our residents, because they say, well, the city of Port Orchard would never do that and the people, the elected officials, this, that, and the other.
Right.
Okay, great. Do you understand that they operate their park system wholly different than we do as our city, right? So education pieces like that, that's just one little tidbit that I'm giving you for an example.
I couldn't agree more.
I, I think anywhere we can do that, whether it's roads, sewer projects, you name it, I think an education piece is great.
I couldn't agree more. And that's one thing I, I really see as a focal point of my position is to, there's a lot of incomplete information and when people, especially when people go to social media, they just fill in the gaps with their opinion or, you know, what have you. I think the post you're referring to says, why don't they turn the old Regal Cinemas into a park and make pickleball courts? Well, it's like, well, that's a piece of private land. Like who's they? Buy it and do that. That's a great idea. But yeah, great. So I, you know, if there's, if there's topics that you feel like this really should be unpacked or something you see, I actually think that's really, really great, really pro, be, be reactive in a positive way. If we're seeing something like a big chain where it's like, there's a lot of misunderstanding, maybe bring that to Mayor and then he could bring, and we can. misunderstanding, maybe bring that to Mayor, and then he could bring, and we can, we can figure that out, but help, you know, help, uh, we need help kind of with, with getting those eyes on it, so yeah.
Go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, Josh.
Hey, thanks for everything you do. You know, I've seen a huge improvement in information provided by the city to the public since I've been on council. One of the things we do, and you're aware of it, you know, we have coffee with council, which has been a pretty good success, and one of the, a couple of the major things we hear about down there consistently are public safety issues, traffic issues, transportation projects, and parking concerns. So if we can kind of make sure that we're focusing on dealing with those real concerns that are coming from our public directly to us, um, I think that'd be even more beneficial than we already are, but I really appreciate how far you brought the city and the communication business um, to this point. I think the citizens are very happy with it, but uh, the more, the better.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go enjoy that family. All right, let's get to our business items then. First of which is a item, business item A, adoption of an ordinance for middle housing. Mr. Bond, this is you.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and members of council. Before the city council is an ordinance amending the development regulations in Title 20 of the Port Orchard Municipal Code. The amendments implement the 2024 periodic update to the comprehensive plan and ensure that the city complies with various new housing mandates, including but not limited to laws concerning middle housing and accessory dwelling units. The ordinance has the unanimous recommendation of the Planning Commission and has been reviewed previously by the Land Use Committee and the full city council at a work-study meeting. Ordinance, ordinance highlights include allowing at least two housing units on every residential lot in the city, allowing at least four housing units on every residential lot in the R2 zone, allowing up to six units of middle housing in the R3 zone, and continuing to allow no limit for density with apartment buildings in the R3 zone. Allowing two ADUs per lot when there's a detached house present. Ensuring that design standards for middle housing and ADUs are no stricter than for a single-family detached house. There are organizational improvements for usability, and we've revised the parking standards to comply with a recently passed law ahead of the required mandate, which is tied to population, which we're not quite there yet, but we will be in the near future. Failure to adopt the required middle housing provisions by June 30th of 2025 will result in the Washington State Department of Commerce's Middle Housing Model Code automatically applying in Port Orchard. This would override local zoning regulations and remove the city's ability to implement locally developed regulations designed to satisfy Port Orchard's needs. One amendment to the, to the ordinance that affects the McCormick Village Overlay District and was distributed via email to the council on Monday concerning the minimum ground floor height, uh, ground floor story height in the commercial area of McCormick Village. The proposal would reduce the minimum ground story floor height from twelve to ten feet in this area of the city. The change would apply only in the McCormick Village Overlay District, and it would allow the use of a prescriptive construction method in the IBC, which limits ground floor story height using wood construction from eleven foot, seven inches from floor to floor with ten-foot studs. And so there is a suggested motion on the dais if you wish to insert that language that has been provided. Otherwise, you can go with the original motion, and the staff recommendation is to approve the proposed ordinance amending Title 20 as presented with consideration of the requested revision to the McCormick Village Overlay District. Thank you.
Questions in particular about the McCormick Village piece? You have a question, or you want to make a motion? Oh, either way.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I move to approve an ordinance amending Title 20 with an additional amendment to POMC 20 dot 28 dot 225 parentheses two concerning minimum ground story height in the McCormick Village Overlay District as presented by staff.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Morrissey, a second by Councilmember Fenton. Go ahead, this is motion maker.
Uh, thank you. Uh, the question, uh, so aside from the overlay, did anything change from, uh, because I did not take the time to read everything uh, from when we saw it at study session.
No major changes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rose Pepe?
Uh, Mayor, I move to adopt an ordinance.
We have a motion on the floor.
Oh, that's right, that one, sorry. You were so, you were so passionate, I thought we moved it.
We have a motion and a second. So this, the motion takes care of the McCormick Overlay District and the model code. Is that correct?
Then we, that I didn't know.
Yeah, Councilmember Fenton?
Now, I know this is all for McCormick Woods. Can, will this be adopted in any other area?
It's, it's only proposed in the McCormick Village Overlay District for now. I wasn't aware of this prescriptive method of construction, but I think the difference between like downtown Port Orchard on Bay Street is that we're really trying to encourage two- and three-story buildings downtown, and you can't use this prescriptive method except for one- and two-story buildings. And so um, I think that we want the higher ground floor height, because it's, it's going to lead to the type of construction that supports additional stories. I also think that on a main street where there's more traffic, ha- having higher ceilings is probably more desirable compared to the village, which is on a plaza and has a little bit different feel. Everything's more low-rise in the McCormick Village Commercial District. The, the housing units are only two-story, the commercial is mostly one-story with a little bit of two-story, and so it's just a lower-scale, lower-profile type design, and I think the ten, the ten-foot limit is something that probably makes sense here, and it's going to be more cost-effective for the developer. With that said, it seems like they didn't look at our code before they designed their buildings, and they submitted building permits using totally different construction methods than what would be required for the, the design standard that we have. So they asked for an interpretation, which our code is not unclear, so I, I really can't give them an interpretation that allows them to do this, but by amending the code, we're allowing them to proceed with the existing buildings uh, as, as designed, rather than having to redesign the buildings, which probably means that these buildings will get built at least a season earlier than they would otherwise be built if, uh, if they had to redesign things.
No, and I, and I, and I totally get that and agree with that, and the downtown, um, you know, down on Bay Street, I was just curious maybe if this comes in another plot or another area. Would that, I guess we'd have to bring that back up to another.
Only for the McCormick Village.
Right, but if we say yes to McCormick, will we say yes to another developer that's not right downtown?
There, there's two ways to do it. You could amend the code in the future if, if somebody requested that, or you can do a development agreement that allows you flexibility in your design standards, so there, there is a path, but the council has to be willing to do that in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Councilmember Rose Pepe?
I think it's just more of a comment, just to make sure I'm right on this, is what we talked about, ADU, being allowed ADUs that existing homeowners associations override that. You know, as far as them going, you know, going in, so it's, it's kind of saying, yes, we allow ADUs, but homeowners associations can block that.
Correct. Well, the city, the city doesn't enforce any HOA covenants. We would issue the permit, but then it would be a civil matter between the homeowner and the HOA if the homeowners association didn't allow it, but I believe state law, at least for now, has carved out any HOAs that existed prior to a certain date do not have to allow ADUs.
Yeah, and I think that's important to know.
But they could. That's interesting. They could.
Go ahead, Councilmember.
Yeah, uh, thanks for all the hard work. I had the conversation with a planning commissioner, and uh, they were all on board with the middle housing stuff, so uh, I, I think that's excellent. Back to kind of, uh, Councilmember Fenton's little line of questioning. We'd be open to making an exception, and would you see another area of town where this exception might work as well? And the reason I ask that is I really like the idea of having that little bit of commercial right where it's located in the McCormick Village, and would love to see more of that throughout town. I know we've kind of gotten into these zonings where, uh, historically, you know, all the commercials in one area and all the residential's in another area, but I think it makes sense when they're a little more intertwined, like this one's being designed.
I think many of our other areas, though, like Ruby Creek or Bethel, we're, we're getting that commercial and the residential. What we wanted is a mixed-use building, which is gonna require the steel and concrete.
That's what I'm asking. Would there be another spot in town that might, I don't see it right now, but?
You know, the only scenario where I could see it, so first of all, I believe the standard, I'd, I'd have to double-check the code. I think it only applies to designated storefront streets, so we have storefront streets, we have varied streets, and we have landscaped streets, and so that, that applies to only the storefront streets, which is Sydney Avenue in the Ruby Creek neighborhood. It's downtown Port Orchard on Bay Street and a couple of the side streets. Um, so it, it, it isn't as expansive as applying to all buildings. I think in strip malls, it's totally appropriate to have ten-foot ceilings, um, and I believe the code allows that, but I was trying to pull it up to, to verify what, that what I'm telling you is correct. But I, I think strip malls would be the answer. Yes, if, if, if it's totally car-oriented, um, it kind of defeats the purpose of having the high ceilings.
Yep, I think so.
Just, just to remind the council that we do have, we do set policies, so we can amend as people as needed, and it's up to a developer to come to us and say this would like to build, not so much for us. Where do we see it? Because we do have a lot of mixed use in our zoning, so I think, I don't want to go down that rabbit hole of saying what, what if.
No, I just wanted to make sure.
Understand, we're open, yeah, we are open.
Yep, yep.
Go ahead, Brett.
Um, I like John's um, um, topic, because it reminds me of like Forest Park, and there's a car auto repair on Sydney by Lippard, so it's sort of like we're talking about a village commercial type thing where people walk to, to maybe get milk, but I think it's a really nice concept, and I would hope that we are open to that. Strip mall doesn't sound quite as nice as a village commercial, though. It has different connotations, and Nick, I was wondering if you might be able to give us a tour of the McCormick Village area, maybe when it's more developed, because um, Heidi and I went and looked at it, and there were, it was just not um, really clear what was wrong, what was not.
Yeah, the village is just dirt right now.
Yeah, and we saw a lot of buildings that were sort of mystery two-story buildings, and it would be nice if we could get a tour when it's more developed.
Yeah, the, the buildings you're seeing are the houses and the detached garage with the ADUs, ADUs open. All right, we.
And I do want to, I did find the answer I was looking for. So for, for single-story storefront and mixed-use storefront, it is all, all areas would have to be twelve feet, so we could look at relaxing that in other districts, but we would, we would want to tailor it so that it's probably not on storefront streets and only in other areas. We can certainly look at that, and I probably could have taken six more months on this code, but we have a deadline, and we're trying to get to the finish line.
And we're meeting. All right, to be voting on adoption of the middle housing ordinance. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? During none, the ordinance passes. The item B now, adoption of, and I want to note that we have, we're gonna have four business items, and it's four different staff members, and that doesn't happen very often. Usually it's the Nick Bond Show, or the Noah Crocker Show, or the Dennis Ryan Show, and everybody's getting cheered an opportunity tonight, so this, so our next item, though, is that adoption of an ordinance amending the 2025, 2026 biennial budget. Mr. Crocker, this is you.
Thank you, Mayor. The city of Port Orchard Biennial Budget for 2526, adopted at ordinance number 1824, is written to capture revenue expenses over the fiscal period. During the biennial period, changes to the budget in both revenue expenditures need to be recognized by a budget amendment. Exhibit A of ordinance 1824 identifies the personnel positions of the city as well as pay ranges. By this ordinance, the city council would amend our 2526 biennial budget as adopted, including changes to Exhibit A. This ordinance will provide the following adjustments. All funds will have their beginning fund balance adjusted to reflect actual beginning fund balance as of 2025, January 1st, 2025. There will be some minor adjustments in revenue expenses for the Givens Park Project, the Marine Pump Station Project, Sewer Lift Station Controls Project, and the ERNR Fund. All funds will also have their ending 2026 fund balance adjusted to reflect the new beginning fund balance as well as the adjustments in revenue expenses. In Exhibit A, we are amending the FT account and salary for the municipal court judge to reflect his recently, not recently, but his awarded contract as of last year. We're adjusting the title of the patrol officer to police officer, again reflecting changes in the guild contract. And uh, lastly, adjusting the police officer minimum and maximum wage to reflect the negotiated contracts. With that, the Finance Director and Finance Committee would recommend adoption of an ordinance amending the 2526 biennial budget, including amendments to Exhibit A.
Councilmember Trinari?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt an ordinance amending the 2526 budget, biennial budget as adopted by ordinance number 018 dash 24.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Trinari, a second by Councilmember Morrissey. Questions to Mr. Crocker? We've talked about this at work-study, and it was covered again today at the Finance Committee.
Uh, agreed. So Finance Committee went through it. I don't think we had anything on this budget amendment, questions, et cetera. Pretty straightforward. Thank you uh, to Director Crocker and his team.
All right, you'll be voting on amending the 2025, 2026 budget, biennial budget. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? During none, the budget amendment has been approved. We're at item C, adoption of a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Source Electric LLC for the lift station controls project. Mr. Ryan, this is you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. The city prioritized the lift station controls upgrade project due to the aging condition of six critical sewer lift stations. These stations are essential for moving wastewater efficiently, but many of their control components have reached the arc of city useful life. Upgrading the systems now will prevent emergency failures and maintain reliable operations. A key feature of the upgrades includes installing all automated telemetry systems, enabling remote monitoring. This advancement will eliminate the need for manual visit, visual checks daily, saving staff approximately three hours a day, including weekends. This weekend labor savings loan equates to roughly three hundred and forty-five hours of overtime annually, significantly improving operational efficiency and reducing costs. To fund the project, the city secured eight hundred thousand dollars in Public, Washington State Public Works Board Traditional Fund Loan Program. Part of this funding was also used for the engineering and design of the project. After restructuring the initial RFP for better cost flexibility, a revised RFP was issued in May of 2025. Source Electric LLC submitted the sole proposal by the June 5th deadline. Their complete and responsible bid totaled one million, sixty-three thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine dollars and fifty-two cents, including a base bid of, and of three alternates, which would given us the flexibility if we weren't able to fund the project. Staff recommends awarding the full scope of the work to ensure comprehensive upgrades across all six pump stations, and this will be the remainder of all of our lift pump stations in the city. We have nineteen of them, so this will bring them all up to modern technology with that telemetry and monitoring system. Thank you.
Councilmember Rose Pepe?
Uh, Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Source Electric LLC for the lift station controls upgrade project.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Rose Pepe, and a second by Councilmember Trinari. It was discussed too at Finance that three hundred hours a, a year equates to about twenty-five thousand dollars a year in salary and benefit savings. In time, it will pay for itself, but more, more importantly, uh, you know, we have twenty-four-seven monitoring of these, and we don't have to send people out to check on these lift stations. Questions? Councilmember Rose Pepe?
Mine is quick. Um, Director Ryan, do you happen to remember the interest rate on the loan is like one percent?
One percent.
Oh, thank you.
No, I was just gonna say, thanks, Dennis, for letting us know that all of our lift stations will now be in upgraded. Uh, don't want to use the word compliant, um, but also the fact that, you know, besides cutting down on overtime, these will now go into our uh, system. I wish I could remember what the name of it was.
SCADA.
You know, right, so for, you know, so we'll be able to uh, plan our work out in the future, so this, you know, for replacing and upgrading, so this is great, great news for the city.
It, it will take, the work is a year, so we're, we still have some time in front of us, but it'll take us, we have three hundred and fifty-two working days, so.
Wow, project. Got a question? Go ahead.
I, I, I don't have a question. It was just gonna be for council here also. I just want to let you know the resolution we just passed amending the budget also takes care of all the different finance for this already, so we've already done that.
Thanks, it's good to know.
All right, any further questions? You'll be voting on a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Source Electric LLC for the lift station controls project. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? During none, the resolution passes unanimously. To our new item D, which is previously consent item C, which is adoption of a resolution confirming appointment of a code enforcement officer. Slott, this is you.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for inviting me to the party tonight. Port Orchard Municipal Code, Chapter 2.08, empowers the city council to confirm mayoral appointments to several positions before those appointments can take effect. Due to an employee departure, the city has recently concluded a recruitment affecting one of those appointed positions. The code enforcement officer one position was vacated in February 2025. The city recruited for and has offered the position to Paul Monzano, effective July 13. Mr. Monzano is currently one of our two part-time parking enforcement officers. This will be the second time in recent history that a parking enforcement officer has been promoted to code enforcement officer pending your authorization tonight. This will be the second time in recent history that a parking enforcement officer has been promoted to code enforcement officer pending your authorization tonight. Catch resolution, uh, requests council confirmation of that appointment and that is staff's recommendation.
Councilmember Chang?
I move to adopt a resolution confirming the mayor's appointment to the position of code enforcement officer one. Or is that aye? It's a one.
It's a one.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Chang, second by Councilmember Morrissey. So this helps us pass the year in code enforcement, but until we get the other position filled, we'll have some capacity issues in parking enforcement now. Because, uh, we stole somebody that's very good in parking enforcement to be our code enforcement officer, so. But, uh, well-deserved promotion for Paul, he's done a great job for us in parking enforcement and this is a great promotion for him. Councilmember Chang, do you have any questions?
Yeah, can you tell us a little more about his background? Um, how's he done other than parking enforcement types of?
Director Bond is the manager of the position, he might want to respond to that.
Yeah, I, I don't know the details of all of his employment history, but I know that he worked in, um, he's from Hawaii originally and he worked in public works and parks maintenance in Hawaii for a long time. And now he also, in addition to working part-time for Port Orchard, he works for Wash dot, uh, ferries. And so I think he works on one of the boats periodically and, um, he's, he's been a good employee for the last two years and I think he takes his job seriously and you know, this will be the second time we've promoted a parking officer to code enforcement, the last one was working out great until her husband was transferred to, uh, California. So, um, I, I expect this to continue in that, uh, trend.
He knows all the streets, knows how to get around the city, that's, uh, he gets complaints, he'll be, you know, have a leg up on anybody that came to us out of, out of somewhere else, so. Other questions?
Yeah, well, I think it'd be also important because we're also getting a lot on media and people talking about on Saturday code enforcement. The city's, you know, that's kind of a hot topic, so I was, maybe you can, um, explain more to why we did more on Saturday with the Marina and all that, just so when people hear this.
Councilmember, that's, it's not part of this at all, we're, we're.
Well, I thought that might be important.
Not part of the question, maybe later, but yeah, that, this is related to confirming a parking enforcement officer.
Well, I.
Code enforcement.
Yeah, code, yeah.
He just happened to come from parking enforcement.
Well, yeah.
It could be a maybe discussion, I think she's concerned about parking enforcement, yeah.
Okay, so bring that to what, you're saying like a work study or something?
Go to the order, but it's not relevant to the topic at hand.
Go to the order.
Discussion.
I'll just take an opportunity to ask Director Bond, I'm just curious, what is ramp-up time for somebody, I mean, parking seems pretty, you know, fits in this box, there's a lot of code. Uh, what, what kind of learning curve, who, who, does he?
Well, the, um, we have a, a car, parking or a code enforcement one and two position, so there's a senior position. And Christine, our, our code enforcement officer, came from a management position in code enforcement supervising multiple officers, so she's a great person to mentor in entry-level position. I think the job description as written is a very entry-level position for code enforcement and so you don't even necessarily have to have a background in code enforcement. It's, um, we're really just looking for the right personality type for being able to do that work because you have difficult conversations. Initially, there's a lot of the temporary sign enforcement, so when signs aren't, you know, one, one day a week, they're spending a half a day going around picking up signs and they're, they're doing a lot of posting of notices, when Christine will prepare the notice, they're actually running it out there, they're going out and doing, you know, kind of assisting in code enforcement as much as anything. So, um, it's, it's a good opportunity to learn and to train, uh, a second person to, you know, potentially fill that, that code enforcement two role someday.
Thank you.
Other question? Alright, you'll be voting on, find that, uh, the adoption of a resolution confirming the appointment of a code enforcement officer. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Having none, the appointment is confirmed. Alright, we will, with, business items are complete, let's go to council committee reports and economic development and tourism. We have a discussion, Mr. Mayor. We have a discussion, and Mr. Bond, I bet you still want to talk about traffic impact, thank you for catching that. Well, Jay messed me up when he pulled the one out of there. They got marks everywhere, go ahead, Mr. Bond.
Alright, so, um, we have been talking about transportation impact fees for the last couple of meetings and at our last meeting, we had done a survey where you all voted kind of on your highest priority projects of, of how to meet in the middle between alternatives A and B. Um, we had our consultant finalize the draft report. We did catch one mistake and so I made one change from the direction that I was given because, um, of, of an important project was left off the list on all three alternatives entirely. Fortunately, it was the same value of your, uh, one of your last ranked projects on the list that you voted on and so we swapped them out to keep the B in that, that middle ground. And the proposed, um, peak PM rate is 79, 77, which is right in the middle of alternatives A and B. For a single-family home, that would come out to $7,498 because a, um, peak PM trip for a single-family home is 0.95 trips. That's about a 27% increase over the current rate of 62, 88, 31. And, uh, and that's for the, the peak PM, uh, trip rate. And so, uh, assuming that this report looks good, our next step is to schedule a public hearing and we would do that on July 8th. And I'm just looking for council's blessing before we advertise that this is ready, ready to move forward. Happy to answer any questions and you guys should, uh, should discuss this and make sure it's the, the way that you want to pursue.
Questions, you guys comfortable with that? Councilmember Rose Pepe?
Yeah, I'm good with going forward with this, I think it's, uh, a nice consensus, uh, where we're at. Uh, the swinging for me, I, I still strongly feel that people moving in need to pay, uh, for the, uh, additional infrastructure uh, and not put it on our citizens. I realize that, uh, we may have a higher amount, but as the mayor and Noah have pointed out, these are funds that have to be expended within a certain period of time. So we are kind of, uh, limited. You can see from, uh, the data that Nick has brought forward that, uh, we're kind of in the, the sweet spot, so to speak. Uh, so I'm, I'm strongly, uh, in favor of bringing this forward as presented.
Councilmember Morrissey, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I want to thank, uh, Nick and, uh, our, our consultant team that I think was helping with, with some of this as well. I've really struggled with, uh, this and you know my term I'm trying to coin now is reasonable housing. Because, you know, this is, we're adding to that cost and so, uh, thank you for the feedback, thank you for listening to what, uh, our concerns were on that. While it's not ideal and we're still adding to that cost of adding housing to our community, um, it, I, we affected that, that, that change and so I think, uh, that this is what we're going to need to move forward with, so I'm, I'm also in favor of, uh, I'm also in favor of moving forward with this.
Other comments? Go ahead, Councilmember.
Well, it doesn't sound like we're really voting on, we're not voting, we're just saying, okay, go forward. But I want to make sure our community and with a public that they really understand to come here so they can talk to us about it. And maybe even putting that down at a farmer's market to say, hey, this is our, you know, transportation impact fee and really listen to our community and then obviously we're going to have it here too.
We, I don't think they plans to take it to the farmer's market, but we are going to hold a public hearing here in the council chambers. Councilmember Chang?
Yeah, Nick, is there an updated visual we could look at? Um, because it seems like we're discussing something that we can't see, I mean, I guess we don't need it, but is it?
Yes. Um, if you go to page, um, nine.
Oh.
Hundred and.
I didn't print that one. Nine what?
Nine hundred and three of the packet, it has the, um, I'm sorry.
Oh, I see, okay, thank you, yeah. I skipped the back. They were about, uh, engineering drawings.
Yeah, and, and the preferred alternative starts on page 906 and this, all the projects that are included, the impact fee rate and the single-family rate, all on one, uh, table.
And also 909 has a, a good graphic too.
Yes, the comparison of jurisdictions in terms of where we would be relative to our peers, um, with, uh, with this rate. So we'd be in the, we'd be in the top third, at the bottom of the top third, uh, for, for impact fees.
Councilmember Trinari?
Yeah, I'd just like to say I'm comfortable moving forward with this, the public meeting.
So it looks like we'll have a public, you know, he'll notice a public hearing, uh, first meeting in July and potential action depending on what the outcome of the public hearing is, uh, at the end of the month, end of July.
And I should mention, um, I did recommend an effective date for the ordinance, I believe, um, it's the, the last Monday in July, so it'd go into effect about three weeks after passage, which gives us time to put it into our computer system for, for actually charging people the rate, but also gives builders a little bit of a grace period to pick up their permits before it takes effect.
Yeah, that was my other question, that making sure that, uh, people who had permits and don't get charged on that, so like you said, you worked that before.
So you're, you're putting that public hearing on the ninth and then the potential, or eighth and potential action that evening, correct?
The ninth in July.
Ninth in July. Eighth of July?
Eight.
Eighth to July eighth. Councilmember Trinari?
So Nick, if the, if the permit is in the pipeline, are they grandfathered in on this?
No, you do not vest a permit fees, but we, if the permit is ready to be picked up, you'll have about a three-week period from passage until it takes effect to pull your permit onto the old rate before the new rate takes effect.
Perfect, thank you. Other questions? Alright, we will move this forward to the July 8th council meeting. Alright, now we're to committee reports.
But can I add one more question to that? Uh, Director Bond, what if we get a bunch of public hearing, are we under a deadline, I guess, if, if you're going to do that? Okay, perfect, so if something happened next, our next meeting and, and, and we didn't want to vote on it that night, we're not up against anything?
Yeah, you could table the discussion and we could amend the ordinance to delay the effective date for a few.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, economic development tourism, have you met since, I think since last week, a lot of these, I don't believe other than finance, uh, utilities is July 15th. You did have not met, finance met this evening. Mark, do you want to give your report?
Yeah, we, uh, reviewed the 2025 sales tax and rate revenues through May, both are still exceeding our, uh, budget projections through May, so that's good news. We had a robust discussion on the sewer rate study and proposed changes.
My apologies.
Dialogues and questions, uh, many of them haven't answered. Our final report is set for late July, uh, should come back before council in September and rate changes would go into effect, any rate changes voted on would go into effect in 2026. Uh, we discussed the budget amendments we heard earlier tonight and voted on. We did talk a little bit about, we're still looking for some, waiting for some camouflage options for our two generators in town that are bright yellow and kind of.
Not slightly.
Not, yeah, slightly, to say the least. Uh, but our next schedule, my next week is July 15th.
And I see transportation is scheduled for next Tuesday, but I bet you guys don't meet because few people are gone, so, um, but, uh, I'll watch you guys work that out.
It's always Zoom.
There's always Zoom, that's right. It's tough to do that when you're driving.
Right.
So, I, but back up to economic development tourism, Josh asked me earlier, you know, we've got a contract out there for the FIFA activity and I just felt that needed to connect with a committee somewhere, so I thought economic development tourism would be the appropriate place for that to happen.
He already acquiesced when we asked at the last E D T meeting if he'd give us a FIFA update at our next E D T meeting.
Alright, you're all over it then. Land use, looks like it's June 18th.
That would be tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night, okay, I'm sorry I'm going to miss it. I'm going to go to the mayor's game. And, uh, hopefully they win. Lodging tax, I doubt there's anything to report, and sewer advisory, anything to report?
No, September.
Okay, alright, we are to the mayor's report, I guess you guys just can't wait for this.
You, you're going to be shorter than John Clausen's report today at Kids Have Transit.
No, no, it won't. Alright, Dan, Brandon, compare of our voting delegates, we talked about that, uh, myself, uh, Mark and Heidi at the A W C Annual Conference. You're going to get a, a, like 15th at our work study, you're going to get a presentation from Bryce Ferguson Miller on the community center. Since it's, uh, many of, uh, three, at least three of you aren't around when a lot of those decisions were made. Exciting news if you haven't, if you didn't hear it, uh, as of last Sunday, two boat service was resumed, uh, in, on the Bremerton Washington State ferries. And speaking of ferries, yesterday morning, John Bosson and I got up, uh, quite early and John picked me up, we drove out to the Harper Park and Ride. And, uh, we hopped on, uh, the transit bus that was standing remotely, uh, down to the Southworth Ferry. And, uh, we rode one of those, that, that particular sailing at one in the afternoon typically has 180 people riding that boat. And, uh, we kind of feel some of our growth is happening, uh, as a result of that ferry and I confirmed that when I was talking to people on that ferry. It, uh, what a positive experience, people thanking us for the ferry service. It was just, it was a really, really rewarding experience to walk around, talk to people, live in our community and, and the greater South Kids Have Ferry also and how much they appreciate, um, the, the fast ferry from Southworth to, to Seattle. And, uh, many are very excited about the Ruby Creek Park and Ride block because they won't even have to arrive out to Harper, the bus will take them. There's a group that they're, trends is running two buses down back to back and they're full, uh, coming from Harper and, uh, so pretty cool. I did a ride along last week with Sergeant Donna Main, and what's crazy is the day before, everybody ran about 20 calls apiece, uh, for service and we didn't have any in my four hours. So, but we got to do community policing and, and so were the, the other, the other officers were over doing, um, some traffic, uh, enforcement over in the school zones and they wrote a lot of tickets, I hear. Uh, and, uh, it was just amazing, Donna and I went around, um, kind of chasing RVs and, uh, school buses that have been turned into RVs. One, a couple of more were Bravo Terrace and we talked to them that this is a no parking zone. Went on about our, where we were and she's, she is amazing, she knows where all of our homeless folks are, what their names are. Checking into, how you doing today? It was just, just a really cool experience. We, uh, had two traffic stops, uh, the first was someone doing 49 miles an hour in a school zone and they got a ticket. Oh, it gets better. Then, so then we're driving back out, uh, towards Tetucon City in the Safeway Parking Lot and the, and the motorhome that, that, uh, we had, uh, asked to leave Bravo Terrace was now parked in the fire lane in front of the grocery store, so, uh, Donna went over and chatted with them again about not parking there, so. Uh, and then we were, it was the end of my time and I needed to get back for something else and it was her lunch and we were coming down Port Orchard Boulevard and this Honda's coming at us at, up the hill at 65 miles an hour and, uh, it wasn't you, no, he was, he'd had his driver's license for two months, he was 16 years old and, um, I was sitting in the car and I watched Donna have waiver finger along with him as she handed him his ticket, so, um, I encouraged all of you to go out and ride with her. It was just a great experience just to see firsthand the, the amazing work that they're doing out there, so. You know, thank you to Donna and all of our police officers that, uh, for, uh, allowing me to participate. You know, we've got that request from the hotelier at Bravo Terrace that he wants semi-parking there and after riding with Donna, I really have some consternation with that, that we're really, we have a problem up there with the RVs and I think it will make it easier. And, uh, so I'd like to meet you guys, you guys are the bad guys, if you could, how do you guys feel about?
I feel as though our friends in the transportation business might help take care of our problem.
What do you mean?
What does that mean?
It could be self-policed. The folks who want to park their big rig there may help others move on about their business.
I don't know.
Aren't we going to have a sign that's for the semi to park there and it's only like early in the morning till whenever?
No, it would be, it would be for commercial vehicles only, I'm just, I, I'm just, I just saw, I saw firsthand the behavior that's going on up there and it, it just troubles me.
I would have to go up there and check it out myself personally.
And then I guess my other question would be, what would make it different if we did or did not allow that, the behavior that you're seeing?
Yes.
Because it needs to be enforced one way or another.
Correct, and it is being enforced, uh, it would be. What the chief had shared with me was now it's a parking violation and I don't think we, we could toe for a parking violation, that's more than before. Something we would write a parking ticket. That's more of a, for something we would write a parking ticket for. Parking in a no parking zone, we can impound the vehicle? Somebody parks where they exceed the time and those types of things, we would never impound for that. We would just write tickets. And that doesn't seem to be.
At what culmination of tickets would we impound?
I'm gonna defer, I I don't know that there is a level.
Well, then maybe that.
There is a level, I don't know the exact timeframe at this point, but when you, when you have temporal limitations as opposed to the prohibition on parking, there are other elements you have to look at in addition to just the stacked violations. So we, that's when the homestead exception comes into play, the vehicle being used for habitation, we have to do all that analysis. So I can't say every time we will tow at this point because it depends on.
Yeah.
How we find the vehicle, if that makes sense. But I think typically it's forty eight hour. If there's some timeframe of the law enforcement utilizes, if the vehicle, for example, it looks like it's not operable, that timeframe is shrunk. If it's missing time, those sorts of things. But if it looks operable and there's other elements present, then we extend that time period from a risk mitigation perspective.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, if we leave it no parking, we can tow them at any point in time?
Easier, correct.
Correct, correct, okay.
Yeah, if there's some issue of homesteading, then we have to add that to our analysis, but it's easier if it's a no, no, no parking in this area.
We could take the land use, if you guys want to discuss that land use, I just.
Bring it on, let's keep going.
Okay, all right.
My understanding, one of this, we brought this up, didn't the hotel or the motel?
The hotels.
Wanted that.
They're, the hotel is requesting it.
Yes.
Should the hotel be providing parking for semis for their own customers?
They don't fit in there.
Yeah, but shouldn't they be, maybe on?
Well, it wasn't designed for that. It doesn't, doesn't fit in the parking lot.
So they're asking the city to provide parking because they don't have themselves on their own lots?
That would be correct.
So. There's that aspect of it too, yeah, so I I don't know, it's tricky, it's sticky.
It's an important aspect, as far as I'm concerned.
So, do you want, so, you want it to go to land use to be talked about, or?
Can, I I personally want to go check it out myself to see what's going on. I'm not getting it.
You're on land use, so you're, you're the.
Land use, so taken.
Okay. Nick, you got that? Topic for land use, all right.
In July, I don't think.
Yeah, July. There's no hurry, guys, just, we want to, you know, work this through a process to communicate back to the business owner. Have you ever been to the chance to listen to that meeting summary? That A I generated, wasn't that, I emailed you last week. Come on, it was really cool. So it took, Janine dropped our three hour meeting into a piece of software. Two minutes later, it spit out that ten minute summary of our, and it was like a podcast. I'd like to use that and put it on our website with a disclaimer that it's A I generated, it's not a hundred percent accurate. But what do you guys think? I thought it was worth.
I saw A I and just skipped it, but I should listen to it.
You should listen to it.
Okay.
I think I should.
Listen to it as well.
So, I'd just like to provide my insight, I use A I every day, right? And so I would just, for me to give that blessing, I would want to see more than one, to see its outputs. Just because I'm familiar with the meeting, like, and and that kind of stuff, because A I does, it gets a lot of things right, but then when it gets them wrong, it it can be an issue.
Yeah, and some, and some of the acronyms and stuff, it didn't get it. So, I'll tell you what, we'll, for a few, yeah, we'll check back on this and and we'll keep, we'll share, we'll share them internally. And, but I, I was amazed. All right, and I'll communicate this to Eric, because he asked the question about elections costs. And we finally, it was like pulling teeth to get this out of the county. So, if if adding something to this November, even though we have elections, it will not be free.
Yes.
That's, it is between, if if done in November, whether it's this November or next November, when there's a major election going on, our cost, that's the least expensive opportunity, anywhere from five to ten thousand dollars. And it varies every time, just depending on how many measures and how many things are on the ballot. We have to pay our share of the overall bill. So Eric was kicking around the idea of putting a vote about fireworks on on the ballot, because it would be the least expensive opportunity to do it. Do you want that on the, I think the deadline for us to put something on the ballot's coming fast, like in August.
Correct.
And do, would you want to talk about that narrow scope of a measure or not? I'm saying, no, no, no.
First off, if I could interject me.
Yeah.
I talked to a council member in Paul's book, and what I heard was not a specific overall fireworks vote. It was about one particular public fireworks opportunity that they had shut down several years ago. They were looking for public input on whether the public wanted to reopen, reestablish that.
Sure.
Not overall fireworks discussion and or certain.
Okay, so I will communicate this, the information to Eric, since he's not here tonight. He's the one that asked the question, I was just following up on it, what I was asked.
Well, I think the other missing council member might, would, might have liked to weigh in.
Yeah. And I'm gonna get Scott too, but I'm not hearing four council members wanting to discuss this further. So it'll be up to you guys to bring this back up if you choose to. All right, our history lessons, fifty years ago in nineteen seventy four, a letter was read into the record requesting the city establish a full time planning department. Wow, we didn't have one. Some, at some point it happened, but some, it was actually a planning commission, commission member that came to the council and read that, a guy named Art Michelson. It was a baseball field named after him.
He was the mayor at one time.
Was he?
Yeah.
Okay. Also that evening, local businesses owners appear before the city council, objecting to the city's fifteen dollar business license fee. I think we're thirty five dollars today, seventy five, fifty years later. Seventy five years ago, nineteen forty nine, an ordinance amending the amusement machines was adopted. So I think this would be like slot machines. So it says a master license fee was seven hundred fifty dollars for up to eighteen machines. And then you paid twenty dollars per machine, and the city also got ten percent of your gross receipts. So, I guess we made money on slot machines sometime and.
Bring it back, sounds like a money making opportunity.
Some laws got passed or something to prevent that.
Might not, might not go very well.
Yeah, okay, a hundred years ago, representatives of the steel and wooden tanks industry were present regarding the matter of a, of new water tanks in the city. And it was decided by the council to employ F D Felder as an engineer to drop specifications for both wood and steel tanks. And it was decided that the steel tanks would be above ground, so they're like a water tower. And for the alternative for the wooden tanks would be a creosote, pressure treated, subgraded wooden tank. Now, we learned that those, that creosote's not good for fish out there, yet we were storing our groundwater at one time, or considered it. So I certainly hope that they pick the steel over the wooden tank.
You didn't read on to find out?
All they did was, I, maybe when I read next month, they'll find out.
I think they did the wood because someone said they found it seventeen feet under the ground.
When we were doing the city project, we, some, some wooden water, like a, like a wood cast. So anyway, that concludes my mayor's report. Mr. Ryan, what do you have?
Would you like me to talk about the marquee lights for the month of July, or do you want?
Certainly you may.
All right, so the mayor's authorized our Public Works street crew to change out our lights. We've got the lights for the holidays, so we are going to purchase, we've already purchased blue lights, two hundred and thirty dollars worth. And we will have the red and white lights that we already have with blue, so it'll be red, white and blue on the marquee for the month of July. And then just a quick update on Givens Park. We, our contractor has started setting posts, they're pouring the curb, it looks like tomorrow. Everything is demoed, if you haven't been by, they are expected to pave the first phase, which will be the Puts All Court. I believe that is happening this week, so you'll see it constructed. We'll have a period where we'll have to wait for the the right weather for the the final surfacing. But we have a dedication scheduled tentatively for August twenty fifth, so project's moving right along.
Will the young man who inspired all this be able to attend then?
That's our goal.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, he's confirmed, the ribbon cutting for the twenty fifth.
Twenty fifth, two o'clock. That it, Mr. Ryan? Okay.
Excuse me, for Dennis, you know, we've talked about flipping the switch on the Marina pump station, and I didn't, I thought that was gonna be in June.
About two weeks out.
Okay, thanks. That's, that's a big day.
It is.
Big day.
No more bypass parts.
Is there an opportunity where we can come and hear that generator work? I mean, that is a massive piece of machinery. I'd just be interested, I know it's not going to be used often, but I just want to make sure that at some point I've heard it.
Yeah, I think it, I don't know if that was operational yet, but the one over here at City Hall is, we could do, it'd be really easy, because it's, it's very similar. We'll walk out here in the parking lot and have Public Works do a test on it, so you can hear it.
I I I don't know if anybody else is interested in that, I would be.
Yeah, I'll, I'll look for some times. We're, we're also trying to set up a tour, it's, it's, it's tricky right now. But we did, Chris Hammer, our city engineer, did meet with our contractor in the port, and they're looking for opportunities to free up some parking for the summertime, so that that is a big priority for that project, and their, their contractor's working with us.
Thank you.
But Ted, Dennis, can we, if it's not next council meeting, sometime in July, maybe we meet just ahead of the council meeting or something? Have them turn the generator on? Okay, all right. No?
So just a quick update, if you recall, our last meeting, we had a gentleman, Kevin, from the group home come and talk about his parking issues. So Finance Department has been working with him specifically, they hear what their issues are and how can help resolve that. Mr. Bond found something in the parking code that would allow the Finance Director to issue a special permit, parking permit, in these type of events. So we've been working with him, we're preparing to send him the application to issue a special parking permit that would address his need. We'd treat him similar to a bed and breakfast, in which you'd have a maximum of three permits. But the permits would have to be checked in, checked out with his employees every day. This was a concern that he brought up due to turnover, so we thought that made sense, that it was treated more similar like a bed and breakfast. So I think we've found a solution for his issue, and hopefully that's satisfactory.
Oh, wow, thank you, Noah.
Good work.
Mr. Bond? Wow. Charlie, you gonna take his time?
Yes, I absolutely will. As I flagged last week, I I postponed my topics to this week, given our, the late hour of our meeting last week. So I had two things I wanted to flag for you, one of which, and both are simply for informational purposes, there's no action needed of you, but just so that you're aware of these things that are going on. The first has to do with the recent Supreme Court order regarding indigent defense services and standards. I'm not sure if anyone saw this in the news, but our Supreme Court issued a, our Washington State Supreme Court issued an order, and we anticipated that this was coming, it had been in the works for quite some time, in response to a study that was undergone, undergone about the ratio of cases handled by public defenders who are assigned to assist indigent defendants. And the concern has been a growing one, which is those ratios were getting skewed, where these public defenders were asked to represent far more folks than they could actually provide competent legal services to. And again, we've known this, this process and this project have been in the works for a while, and the study has been ongoing. But the Supreme Court order, the Supreme Court's order is the capstone on that project. And we hear from the Supreme Court in the form of an order, because they are making a a recommendation to public agencies throughout the state to modify the cap on the number of cases that indigent, that public defenders can, can take on at one time. So the reason this is relevant for the city of Port Orchard is, as a, as a, an operator of a municipal court, you have a contract with a public defense firm to provide indigent services. And I believe we recently approved the contract for the next year, and we knew this was coming. So at the time of discussions about that contract, and I believe we even flagged this for the council when we asked you to authorize us, authorize the mayor to sign this. We, the the modifications in this ratio will likely necessitate your public defender and all public defenders to increase their staffing loads to meet those new ratios. So where they could, at one time, get by with two attorneys to meet the caseload, they may now need to retain three, four, sometimes even five attorneys, which will have a direct relationship to the costs that we pay for public defense services, which are something by statute we have to provide. So the the upside to this is that the Supreme Court's order gave a long lead time for us to meet these new standards. So we will have to reduce the caseload cap by ten percent each year over the next ten years. So it's not as significant of an impact as we anticipated. We thought they were gonna immediately drop and we would have to immediately absorb it, which was almost, almost an impossibility, because there simply aren't enough attorneys going into the field of public defense. This way is responsive to that reality, and so the 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 impact will be gradual over the next ten years, but there will be an impact. And we, Brandy and I, and the Police Department and the courts, all of us working collaboratively, will be bringing back a new contract for next year in the normal course, but there may be an increase in the cost that you will see associated with this in response to this modification to the cap. So this is a very interesting topic, I'm always happy to chat with it over a cup of coffee if you have questions about it, because it's very nuanced. But I wanted to flag that this had occurred, as you may have seen in the news.
Yeah, and Ms. Archer, I don't believe this is gonna affect us for a couple of years, because there's a number, and we're well below that number. And then it goes by, down by ten percent a year over the next ten years, and it's gonna take at least a couple, if not three years, before we hit that number. So it may not, it likely won't affect us in this biennium, it's probable, it's, it's very likely in the next biennium, though.
That is an optimistic way to look at it, possibly, yes. It depends entirely on your vendor. So your public defense vendor is also serving other public agencies in the, in the area. So whether they need to bring on new staff, we do have a guarantee for the next year. I believe that contract only went a year, it was all we could get him to sign. So there may be some modification, but you're, you're absolutely correct, Mayor, that the, the actual cap does not affect us, but the practical implications of the larger move.
His need to hire more attorneys.
Exactly.
Pass that cost on to us.
Exactly, for overhead, for additional paralegals, all those costs that go into running a law firm. Looks like you had a question.
Yeah, where did the Supreme Court propose this funding come from?
Great question. There is a. So one of the few things that that was not cut in the budget is the relatively robust public defense grants, which I believe your city and your court are currently applying for. So there is funding still available, I don't know, I doubt that it was increased, but they did cut it, so that's a positive. Yeah. Perfect. The second topic I wanted to touch on briefly was, I had been updating you throughout the legislative session of issues that were relevant to you. And now that legislative session has ended, and we've had the opportunity to take a breath, there are a number of laws related to public records that will be impacting your public records officers and your volume of work associated with public records, which, as you know, we cannot even touch a recovery related to the amount of money we spend processing public records. And so this, these new laws, these new modifications to the Public Records Act, will have fiscal implications for the city through the work of your public records staff. But I just wanted to touch on a few, because they are pretty expansive this year, and I think some of them are of interest to elected officials throughout the state. So in large part, the modifications expanded what we refer to as exemptions under the law. So when a public records request comes in, we view the request, we determine the responsive record, and then we review the responsive record for any applicable exemptions. And those are the, that's the information that we are able to redact. And so a, an exemption gives us a legal defense insofar as we have chosen to redact information and not provide it to the requester. Because the default is, we are supposed to give the requester everything, except where the law specifically allows us to redact. And so the, the main thrust of of my comments tonight are just to flag additional exemptions, so additional mandatory exemptions that were added to the Public Records Act, that again, will increase the load of work for your public records officer. In large part, exemptions are not mandatory, they are voluntary, meaning if, if, when I review, if Brandy reviews and we miss something, as long as we are acting in good faith, there's no liability to the city associated with us not redacting that information. However, there are a few situations where those reductions are mandatory, and there's potential legal risk if we don't catch them, which usually means we. which usually means we duplicate review, we do things like checks and balances to make sure we don't miss those. The primary area where that occurs in has to do with police records, and your police records department is, um, excellent, uh, and they catch those. Uh, but another area that was relatively new to the Public Records Act, I believe it was in 2018, is a provision that allows us, or that requires us rather, to redact the names of employees who are the participating in, uh, investigations related to harassment or discrimination claims, uh, as either the complaining party or a witness. So if if an employee were to bring a claim of harassment by another employee, and those investigative files, uh, have an exemption for the name of the complainant, if it were me, my name, and then any witnesses who were interviewed as a part of that inspection. And so the law was the name, it can be redacted. And now, as a result of this legislative session, the legislature expanded that exemption to include any identifying information, which is a very helpful step for them to have taken, because very often when we would redact the name, it would say, you know, Bob Jones, Public Works Director. We were to redact Bob Jones' name, but we would have to leave Public Works Director. So it was essentially useless, because you had that identifying information. This exemption, however, makes it possible for us to redact identifying information about the employees, including their email address, their name, their, always your their name, but their position, title, and other information. That will be a more expansive process that we'll have to undergo. But the key I want to highlight is, not only are we now allowed to or mandated to redact that, we are also now required to alter audio of any interviews that occur as a result of these investigations, which comes with a substantial cost. We are required to alter the voices of the complainant and any witnesses while leaving the tone and intonation intact. So if anyone has any ideas how you do that, we're, uh, still looking into that. Uh, but there's apparently very expensive software that can be utilized for that purpose, and it is now mandatory that we utilize it for that purpose. The area where this most commonly comes into play is in law enforcement, where recording interviews is more typical. Uh, the other areas of, uh, this, the law that applies or the the practices rather, interviewing is less common. But it is common, it is, it does occur, and this will be a significant, um, expansion of the exemption. So wanted to highlight, um, that one for you. A couple of others I just wanted to very briefly touch on. Uh, the legislature took action to add an exemption related to, um, data and formula for public risk pools used to calculate your rates as a public risk pool member. So this is a useful exemption, but we do have this information in reports that you receive from your insurance on an annual basis. So this will be a, another exemption that is brand new, that will be, um, uh, added to our list of exemptions. And that is a voluntary exemption, not a mandatory exemption. Uh, another interesting one that, uh, is coupled with another law, um, that, uh, will affect, uh, city municipal agency and primarily the Police Department, has to do with, uh, the, uh, I can't recall the name of the act, but an an act was, uh, enacted this last cycle with regards to the use of speed regulators on the vehicles of individuals who were, who were found convicted of reckless driving. So they now have to have speed regulators or devices that keep them from speeding installed on their vehicles as a condition of their reckless driving conviction. And the data that we would collect associated with that device, which would be installed at the direction of the municipal court, the data itself is now exempt. So that is another form of data that we have access to, and another step that your public records, uh, requesters will need to go through, and that is a mandatory exemption. So, um, I'll be working closely with your Police Department. So that's just a few, there's a a much longer list, and I'm happy to, uh, have chats about the the other exemptions. Those, the rest do not necessarily apply to us, a lot, in large part, as is their want, the legislature, um, adopted exemptions that are unique to state agencies. Uh, so they helped themselves out in that way, but I'm happy to have conversations about that as well. So just wanted to touch on those few, but at the request. Thanks so much.
Deputy Chief. Thank you for being here.
No, no problem, thank you, Mayor, council members. Uh, Chief Ryan had asked me to speak, uh, to the current and ongoing efforts of the Police Department in reference to, uh, concerns over traffic enforcement as well as, uh, noise complaints, uh, primarily along the Bay Street corridor. And so the data that, uh, I collected is both, uh, citywide as well as, uh, addressing that specific corridor from the far west point, the Annapolis. Um, but essentially, uh, our traffic enforcement for the Police Department, we have literally doubled our production productivity. And so we have seen, uh, a doubling of our, if if we stay on pace, uh, our officers double their number of traffic stops on the year. And about 129 of those, 129 of those stops are specifically on the Bay Street corridor, which comprises approximately 8% of our current stops, uh, on the year. So the the correlation between that 8% is roughly 10% of our accidents within the city occur along that same Bay Street corridor. And so it's a highly, uh, busy area for the city, and so we want to ensure that we're active in that area. And so we've made ongoing efforts to communicate that with our staff, to ensure that they're out there every day, uh, being a visible presence to hopefully deter the speeding that the mayor witnessed as well, um, within the city. And so they have been very good in doing that. Overall, through the city in 2024, we saw roughly 9.9% drop in traffic collisions citywide. Um, if we keep on this current pace, I suspect we'll see a similar drop in 2025 from 2024. And so, um, we're very hopeful that 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 is the case. Obviously, we want to impact, uh, the, uh, quality of life for our citizens and protect them from potential hazards like that. But when it comes to the noise complaints, uh, we have been very active, we've had 39 total patrol checks just along the waterfront area specific to noise complaints, over 75% of them occur in nighttime hours. And so our personnel are out there, that's primarily when the issue exists. And so we've communicated that to our night shift graveyard officers, to have a visible presence out there. And so they they are doing that.
Is that just this year, Deputy Chief?
That is from January 1st till current.
Thank you.
Additionally, we've received 20 total complaints in that same corridor. Only seven of them are related to motor vehicle noise, um, or engine noise from that area. And then seven, uh, calls for service in reference to individuals, people actually making noise. And so as a, uh, representation of that, our officers, night shift officers have been hanging out in the area more frequently. And as an illustration of that, we had, uh, some reckless drivers, individuals that were, um, creating a distance error, fixing, patching out and running their tires, skidding around. Uh, two of our officers were able to, uh, initiate, or attempt to initiate traffic stops. Importantly, the vehicles eluded, so there are more significant criminal charges, uh, going down the road. Those same individuals were identified and it's also Bremerton, so it's an ongoing investigation that we and Bremerton PD are currently, um, involved. Yes.
A quick question, so, um, I know the port had put up their signage, uh, so is that helping us with the enforcement, uh, of that area?
Yes, it's, I believe that's gonna assist us quite a bit. Um, the Port Department had, uh, signed, posted signs for the trespass.
Right.
Issues, and so that gives us another tool in our pocket that we can hopefully leverage to gain compliance from, uh, from those individuals that are causing the problem. Thank you.
Uh, no, I appreciate that, and so will the neighbors, what you guys are doing for the, especially the after hours and the night, um, shift for the police officers. Will we get, um, data on like how many tickets that you might be giving out to the people i- in down in the Marina?
So specific to, um, the Marina area, we we can pull that data, I don't have that exact number now, I can't tell you.
Yeah.
On the year, we have essentially, um, equaled the number of citations that we issued, all of 2024, uh, at this point this year. And so, uh, the active enforcement with the speed grant.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and such, um, you know, we have speed grant emphasis, we've had three of them so far. And that will continue along with DLI emphasis throughout the year up until September.
No, okay, thank you.
Were you done, WG?
Oh, yes, sir.
Okay, I did, I didn't want to interrupt if if you weren't done. I just have some, could you bring us back some data? It seemed like this last weekend, um, and again, they weren't all on city streets, uh, but there were some deadly and bodily harm. Can we get some stats around, uh, uh, I'm, I'm, I don't know if I'm gonna come with the right word here for our traffic, uh, related bodily injury, deaths, et cetera. So, uh, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? It's not just fatalities, but even when injuries sustained during those traffic. I I'd just be interested, uh, to hear that, I I I love that we're, I I'm guilty a lot of times of not paying attention and going too fast myself. And I I've, I've received a ticket while sitting, uh, as a city council, and it's good, right? I'm not gonna stop that because I need to curb that, but I would just be interested on how that's affecting, uh, our more serious accidents as well.
So I I can't speak, I do know some of the numbers so far.
Oh, nice.
So when it comes to, uh, injury traffic collisions, um, we have seen, uh, similar reduction, approximately 10% reduction in injury traffic collisions. Yeah, we anticipate that, uh, trend to continue throughout the year. Um, there's a direct correlation, uh, between the speed, amount of enforcement versus the, uh, amount of injury traffic collisions that occur. And so, uh, statistically, you'll normally see that correlation of the increase in traffic enforcement will reduce injury traffic collisions, and we are seeing that trend currently. Thank you.
Other questions? Alright, anything else?
No, sir.
Alright. Welcome back, Brandy.
Thank you, glad to be back. I don't have anything to report tonight. I'm still catching up.
Just got back.
Yeah, how many thousands of meetings?
Ms. Lund, do you have anything to report?
Thank you.
Alright, we are to our second citizen comment period. Is there anyone online wishing to address the council? Please use the raise your hand feature, and we'll bring you into the meeting. I see no one raising their hands, we'll close the second citizen comment period, we do not have an executive session tonight, and anything for the good of the order?
I have a quick one.
Go ahead.
Uh, I was fortunate last Friday to go to the Kitsap Community Foundation's celebration. Uh, it was a wonderful evening, and the reason I'm bringing it up is that, uh, uh, former Mayor, Bremerton Mayor, Patty Lent was recognized for her philanthropic, uh, efforts, so if you see Patty at some time, uh, in your travels, please tell her congratulations. It was a wonderful evening, and and, uh, the fact that she was recognized was, uh, just doubled it.
Standing, Patty's good people.
Yep, she is.
Alright, anything else for the good of the?
I'll go for Fred.
Go ahead.
Okay. Um, yeah, Heidi and I went today on the Kitsap Building Association bus tour, and we toured four, um, developments, not just, um, uh, the first one was actually on the border between Bremerton and Pauls Bow, it's called Royal Valley 166 Acres Project, adding 644 units by 2029. They said one of their challenges was having to get permits from eight different jurisdictions. Uh, the next place was the Blue Ridge Apartments in Bremerton, they're adding 323 Garden Apartments. Their Phase One is now complete, they're considering it workforce housing and market rate housing. And they said their eight-year MFTE, and that came up a lot, uh, multi-family tax exemption, made their project pencil out in a semi-depressed area. Uh, then we saw a, uh, Big Rambler on Lily Pad, which is, um, Manchester area. It was a Bob Disney and Associates single-family house, uh, it was going, uh, for 879,000, but it was, let's see, 2,700 square feet, and it came with a lifetime warranty, which we thought was interesting. It also had sprinklers, and it had to have sprinklers because there were more than four houses on the street with or without a hammerhead. I can't read my notes. Um, he said their permitting took seven to eight months, but construction is only gonna take 47 days. This is in the county, not the city. And he, one of his challenges was having to build a house one at a time, because it's a 10-house development. They can only build one after the other, can't, they can't build all 10 at once, something to do with impervious services. And then the last place we visited was an 1,100-square-foot project, Habitat on Harris Court, three-bedroom, two-bathroom, with net zero emissions, uh, energy-wise. Uh, they're moving from a fee simple to a land lease model, so people no longer own the land that they're buying. And one interesting thing that they said was that both Kitsap and the school district waived impact fees on these homes.
Yeah.
Alright, anything else?
Yes, for the good of the order here, um, the farmer's market was great on Saturday, and also the night market was fantastic. And a lot of people came out for that. And I also want to say this coming 22nd, this Saturday, over at the skate park, the, um, Unity, um, is presenting, it's called Go Skate Day. And they do an annual, um, every two, every year, and they they have bands, so they're gonna have food, and our Port Orchard Rotary helps out with that. And so that's gonna be a really good time at the skate park on, um, and it's from 12, 12 o'clock to 5:00. And then I also wanted just to, um, say too, on, yeah, I learned a lot on our bus tour. And it's kind of unfortunate, it's actually 72% of Kitsap County households cannot afford medium-priced homes. And that's pretty high. And there, we, I wrote down some stuff, and I think that would be great to bring it to a work study, how we can kind of help and be a part of, um, you know, homes and the builders, and how we can help, um, facilitate a little bit better in the city of getting things passed a little quicker. And then we won't talk about it now, but I think it'd be good too for a work study about, um, the code enforcement I brought up earlier.
So you're talking about parking enforcement, go ahead, what's, so what's your question?
I would like to bring, um, for more knowledge, because that's a hot topic downtown, the people, um, are complaining about Ford, uh, the, um, you know, the, um, the code enforcement. And I think just to have more, um, just understanding for them to hear about why it is on Saturday and why it's more, um, or you could talk about it now.
Sure, it's not, it's not code enforcement though, it's parking enforcement.
Well, parking enforcement.
Okay, so we added the Saturday hours to the budget process at the request of the Port of Bremerton, primarily. Because on Saturdays, the, a lot of the parking is taken up by the farmer's market. Now that problem is going to go away when we've got the Orchard Street Plaza, but, um, you know, the, we have a problem with folks not, you know, abiding by parking regulations on Saturdays. And it comes from visitors to the merchants, to boaters, parking on Bay Street or in in areas, you know, showing up on Friday night and not leaving until Sunday, and parking along Bay Street and other areas. So the Saturday parking enforcement helps us curb that behavior and making sure that the boaters are parking where they're supposed to be parking, which, uh, the port has that area where they've raised the parking fees on. And, uh, those folks that have, that park in the Marina have their pass, are exempt from those, um, those parking fees. Uh, so the, it was at the request of the council that we fund that position at the, by the request from the.
The Marina.
The Marina, the, uh, Port of Bremerton.
Uh-huh.
That we have Saturday parking enforcement to curb the behavior that we were having related to people not following the parking regulations.
Right, no, I understand that too. But also the mer- merchants who, maybe later or something, we can talk about to help the merchants, because.
So how would you propose?
For them to move, um, or where can they park?
Well, they, just like everyone else, they need to abide by our parking regulations. We do have a gravel lot up here at City Hall here that's open to anyone, so. When you're, we're only enforcing this parking from Prospect Street down the hill in the waterfront. So, you know, I would recommend that folks park not in the two-hour parking in front of their store, and if they don't want to move it every two hours. There's plenty of places where it's not enforced on Saturday at all. You can, Kitsap Street up is, there's no parking enforcement, it's only Prospect down the hill.
And it's Pros, it's Kitsap down the hill.
Excuse me, Kitsap down, oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Yeah, and maybe put that on the government page, or, you know, the media, so, um, it it just gets more information out there.
So we, we.
I think we did about a month.
We had, we did it for more than a month, um, and we wrote warnings actually for more than a month before we started enforcing it. So, Mr. Bond?
Yeah.
Well, I was also gonna report, if if there's more complaints, I did learn that the Park Mobile system was down this Saturday, and so a number of people confronted our parking enforcement officer wanting him to fix it, he was explaining that it's the port of the Bre- of Bremerton. The Bremerton staff didn't know that it was their system and kept telling, saying, no, you have to talk to the city. So it was, it was a, there was a bit of, uh, confusion this weekend, and we're working with James Weaver to get it straightened out.
Yeah.
The only thing I would add is that I think you're both right, it's like, there there are complaints about parking, and the city has done information of. Um, I think the challenge is. um, I think the challenge is informing merchants who are parking in two-hour parking on Bay Street.
In front of their store.
In front of their own store, on blocks where the landlord has not provided any off-street parking, there is one block like that, the others, landlords do. And it's interesting, because I got, you know, a very heated discussion, and I said, well, the city does this, the merchant should do this, the merchant should talk to POA or P O B S A and find out. And then they said, you're blaming the merchant for, you know, not knowing how to park, I think. You know, so it's a very frustrating conversation, and I think anything we can do to help educate people about what the city is doing for parking, and, you know, where Saturday or Sunday parking is available, because there's always going to be a new merchant who isn't aware of any of this.
Correct.
And unfortunately, she posted a Facebook and gets hundreds of comments. That's been a real sad.
No, I was just going to say that, uh, several years ago, and I think you remember this Fred, we had a discussion on Monday through Friday, parking and switching, you know, two hours, and we saw people camping out, and the fact is that with not expanding our parking enforcement to Saturday, it's not creating confusion as much as a change in behavior. And we've had more than one, uh, one person, one merchant come and say, hey, we need people to keep moving on so that, so that people aren't camping out down there. So I, I, I agree, as much communication as we can, but I believe that over several weeks of people getting cited, cited for it, they'll learn very quickly. So I think we're moving in the right direction, I would not like to change anything right now.
I, I concur with that statement, I might say that our job is to help educate those folks too, right? Uh, I now, for multiple weeks in a row, have come down on Saturday at 10:00 AM, at the height of when all that's happened, and have no park, issues parking, in free parking, um, taking care of my business and, and going on about my business, uh, so I don't stay long, because I'm supposed to be at work that time on Saturday, but, uh, my boss does let me run down and, and, and in fact, I, I saw you, Councilmember Fenton, and so.
Oh, yeah, you're there, night market.
Uh, and, and night market, right? Um, and so I think our job is to help remind folks, right, because I'm with Jay, I hear merchants that have says, we want parking enforcement, because I need to get my customers in and out, that's how they're able to make, make, make their livelihood as well. So I think it's all just an education piece, and change is hard.
It is, and that's why I bring it up again tonight.
Yep, so I think again, uh, it's like one of my mantras at work, everything's hard until it's not. And we're at that point where it's new and it's change, and we just have to continue working with folks and say, yep, change is hard, uh, and we know that we can do this too. Because I would challenge them, when they go to the mall, they work a, walk a lot farther than I had to from my parking spot, uh, to, to attend the farmer's market.
We'll send them your number.
Depends on the time.
All right, anything else for the good of the order? Go, go ahead.
Yeah, just as a member of the Kurt Wagner Educational Foundation, I'd just like to thank the city and the mayor for all the volunteers who came up to our bowling program last Wednesday, I think there was probably 20 city employees there. Um, seemed like everybody was having a good time, we appreciate you, your support, thank you for, uh, coming up. And I, if I'm not mistaken, I think the Public Works team.
Yep.
Took home the mayor's trophy, because they outlasted everybody else. Cute, well, thanks for coming up, you guys.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up, Mark, that's, that's huge, it's a part, it's an organization I'm a part of. Um, and we, the, uh, benefits, uh, our school district and our grants for our teachers, so the classroom grants, and the bowl, HighJoy Bowling has supported us for years, they give 100% of the money that night, so everybody pays $20 a head, and it all goes to the charity. So, um, really, shout out to HighJoy, uh, for supporting our community that way, and our nonprofit, and our employees that, uh, the police had a team, Public Works had two teams, finance, and D C D, I don't know, maybe, hmm, with that, our, our, uh, our meeting is adjourned.
Mr. Mr. Eric, thank you.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I think I'm in front of me.
All right.